Good evening, folks. We are called back to order for the work session regarding taxes and reevaluation. And with that, we'll head off with Mark McLintock.
Thank you. I also have with me from the Tax Department, Diane Wilson, who's the real estate supervisor, and Todd Hurst, who's the chief appraiser. Diane's been with us since 98, Todd since 2007. They've both seen a couple of revales. The purpose of this work section is to inform the commissioners of the current real estate market trends that we're seeing and to plan for the next reappraisal of real property. As an overview, the Rockingham County, we're currently on an eight-year cycle for the last two reappraisals. We performed the 2019 reappraisal, and our next reappraisal is currently scheduled for 2027. We have to begin planning well in advance of a reappraisal. It takes about three years to perform, and there are standards that we must adhere to. The North Carolina Department of Revenue oversees the work of the tax departments, and they've published standards which require us to supply a budget and a plan to the Department of Revenue for approval. We also have to perform a random data sample, which we're in the process of doing right now, and then with that information, they'll make their suggestions on what type of reappraisal we need to do. We're also governed by statute. While the North Carolina Department of Revenue standard suggests that if our assessed values fall 90% below the market or 110% above the market, they suggest a reappraisal. North Carolina statutes 105-286 require that if we drop below 85% of the market or over 115%, we must perform a reappraisal within three years. Also, not only does there is another statute involved which is directly related to our sales ratio. If our sales ratio drops below 90% of the market prices, then in the fourth year of a reappraisal, we can be equalized by the public, by the North Carolina Department of Revenue, and that equalization affects public utility values. Our public service companies like Duke Power, our largest taxpayer, are valued by the North Carolina Department of Revenue, and each September, they send us a certification of what we can charge or the value that we apply our tax rate to. In Rockingham County, we're blessed with $910 million of public utility. That is a large amount. In the fourth year of a reappraisal, if we drop 90% below or below 90% of the market based on our independent sales ratio, the random one we send to the Department of Revenue, we are equalized that amount. They take that percentage from those public utility values. Further in the presentation, I've got exactly how much money that can mean. For us, 2023 is that fourth year where the potential, if the sales trends continue, for us to drop below that 90% exists. So our sales ratio is very important, and we track that. It determines when we have to do a revale, or it can determine revenue we lose from losing value. In 2020, based on the 2019 sales, our published sales ratio is 98.9%. We project that for 2021, the 360 random sample that we sent to the North Carolina Department of Revenue will be about 91.5%. Right now, based on the first two or three months and as we look to next year, we could conceivably drop below 85%, which would require a 2025 or a reappraisal per the North Carolina general statutes. And further in, I've got those broken out as to the dollar figures that could potentially lose us. We have concerns remaining on our current eight-year cycle. If the sales price trends we see today continue to rise over the tax values, we could be forced by statute to reappraise as early as 2025, by statute, if we go below 85%. If the sales prices continue to rise above the tax values, we could see the equalization in 2023 from our public service companies. 10% of the public service revenue is $618,710 that we would, that would be removed from the amount we would receive if those values remain at $910 million. I have a slide further that shows what that would be if it increased even up to 20%. Railroads are equalized at 95%, and we have about $39 million of value in railroads. So this year, we will start seeing a reduction in railroads of about $27,000 tax dollars, and that will continue to our next revale based on the published sales ratio that we see each year. If the sales price do continue to climb, another disadvantage to the eight-year reappraisal is the sticker shock. In eight years, if the trends continue, how far will tax values be below the market price? And that is something we don't know, but it is something to consider. Before talking about the next revale, I wanted to give you a little bit of history on the reappraisal and the workloads. In 2003 and 2011, we had two additional permanent staff appraisers, and we performed the reapvaluations using some temporary staff. We contracted out the commercial industrial, but we did the rest of the revale ourselves. It's very labor-intensive, and our field work was called a walk-around approach, and I'll cover that a little bit later in the types of revale. The economic conditions after 2008, we know how erratic that was, and that had prompted us extending the revale period from '03 to 2011. The appraisers that we had then retired, and the only way to practically staff for a revale is four years. It's hard to staff for an in-house revale over eight years. You have to have a trained and retained staff. For 2019, we did a hybrid approach where we hired a contract company to assist us. They provided field appraisers to do a lot of the walk-around approach, going out and viewing the property. They assisted us with keying the work. We brought back in a retired appraiser who helped us, and they assisted with the land pricing. We did our schedule of values. This is probably not practical for future reappraisals, as some of the more experienced people in my department are retiring out. In 2019, our budget for the reappraisal was around $520,000. We've retained 100, I'm sorry, we retained $33,000 of that. So our current reserve right now is $183,437 in budget for the next reappraisal. And as a reference, the 2019 reappraisal netted us about a 4% increase in value, which is about $1.4 million if you were looking at our current tax rate. One of the problems in planning for a reappraisal, especially this one, is the unknowns. What will our real estate market look like in two, three, or four years? I don't know what the market will look like, but we can kind of, we know what will happen if certain things do happen with the market. We can only estimate the growth and loss potential based on the current information we have, and all of our projections, the accuracy is subject to change with the market. 2008 showed us that that market can change pretty quick. So the big unknowns is what will our sales ratio to tax value to market price be over the next few years? What general economic trends will affect the county? What will be their effect on the market prices when the foreclosures from the moratorium that the mortgage holders had from COVID hit the market? As a reference, back during 2014, 2007 to 2014, we would see over 300 private foreclosures a year. Last year was only 80-some, and the year before that was about 177, as things had stabilized for a couple of years. So we don't know what's pending out there and how that would affect supply. We don't know how COVID will affect the future economy, and something we've all seen is its effect on the supply chain. We don't know what real property growth will be from other subdivisions that we hear are coming, other houses that are being built in this booming market. We don't know what construction cost will do. As y'all seen, construction cost, it's just phenomenal what they've rose to. What part of that is supply chain and what part of that can stabilize? Personal property values with pending industry that's coming, that's an unknown, and as is growth variations in our different parts of the county. You could see an overall growth in a revale of, let's say, 10%, 15%, but it could be localized growth, depending on where it is in the county. So these are all unknowns we wanted to bring to y'all's attention. This is a large decision, and we wanted to make sure you had all the facts, and much of this, you're seeing in the news and you're seeing from day to day. When we're looking at the potential revenue growth, since the spring of 2020, even with the pandemic, I didn't see, and I don't think most people saw, the rise in residential real estate values or prices and market trends we're seeing. The low interest rates, supply, demand, and high construction costs have contributed to a pretty unprecedented market in our county. We don't know what the market will be in the next few years, but the guidance from tonight will help us in planning this next reappraisal. The earliest we could perform a, or practically perform a reappraisal is 2024. To do that, we would have to start this summer, have our contract and vendor in place. This would require a resolution from the commissioners officially to advance that revale. The future predictions of revenue growth, I've been very conservative, and I'm going to show some charts and everything, but what we did is the last couple of years, we've been around 70 to 80 million in growth. So I'm showing 72 million in growth on all of my projections based on just construction as we see now, the subdivisions we see now and what's going on. That's about $500,000 additional revenue each year. I'm not going to show any projections for personal property. Motor vehicles has main, remain stable. NTE, Ontex, Perina, those we expect tax value increases in most of those, but it's hard to project those. So this is very conservative as I projected forward. With the current market trends, you'd expect a reappraisal that was done now or in the future, if the trends remain stable, to be far more than 10% growth, but I'm using 10% in the projections. And all of the upcoming charts will show our current tax rate, and when I show the potential revenue in the revale year, it will not be revenue neutral. It's just an example at the current tax rate of those values. And once again, it doesn't include unknown structures that we find usually when we're doing a reappraisal. The first chart, series of charts, this is if we were looking at a 2024 reappraisal. This is just the growth of adding $72 million a year out to 2023, then a 10% growth in 2024. So we'd go from our $5.3 billion now to about $6 billion in taxable real estate. The compounded growth from that, if we add $500,000 a year from 2021 forward, we're looking at about 1.5 million of normal revenue growth on our current schedule of values and tax rate. With a 2020 or 2024 revale and another potential 10%, you could be looking at 3.8 million in growth. However, that doesn't mean we would reap 3.8 million for that year. The commissioners, a lot of times in reapvaluation, look to the revenue neutral rate, which means it's the possible reduction of the tax rate based on the growth of the base and the amount of money you need. So when I'm showing potential loss or potential growth, that doesn't necessarily mean money in the bank. It's money we may be losing, but it's also can affect your tax rate. This is the chart that is kind of most important to look at, I feel. The blue is potential loss if we're not at 100% of the market. So this is money that could be used either in revenue or reduction of tax rate, either one. Right now, at 91.5% sales ratio, that's $3.1 million of revenue, potential loss that you would see in 2021 when we build. It's not true loss, but it's revenue that's left on the table or the ability to affect the tax rate. If we move towards 2022 and we drop back to an 85% sales ratio, that's 3.7 million, and at 20, and it's, I'm sorry, 10% is 3.7, and at 15% and 85% sales ratio, it's $5.6 million. The red bars are the most important. If the trends remain the same, and if we drop below 90% in 2023, we will lose money on public utilities. 10% loss is $618,000 of revenue. A $928,000 at a 15%, and 20% is 1.2 million loss regardless of our growth. The blue, once again, just illustrates at the current tax rate, that is money that's left on the table or the ability to adjust the tax rate as we go towards revale. Since we cannot do a reappraisal until 2024, if we go below 90, we will be equalized in 2023, and we'll see the loss, which is the amount of that percentage that we're reduced from public utility. 2024 is the only practical, closest date we can do the revale. I've done the same charts that just push this through 2025. As you can see, if we go out to 2025, you're at about $6.1 billion, and that is not accounting for any potential growth from new subdivisions. It's just plugging along like we are right now, about 72 million a year with a 10% growth at revale. Once again, not knowing what the market and the trends are going to do, we're just projecting this based on what has happened. You're looking at about 3.8 million in 2025 at the current tax rate. The compounded growth we would see would be about 2 million up through 2024 if we stay as we are. But through 2025, most of the figures stay the same, except if we have a reappraisal 2025, and if we are equalized in '23 and '24, we double the loss that we would take from losing money from our public utilities. There's a lot of ifs. I wish there wasn't, but we're trying to project out several years to an unknown. But our concern is this loss of revenue that could be used to affect the tax rate or an actual loss of revenue that we could see in '23 and '24 if this market remains the same. There's several different options and costs to do a reappraisal. These following estimated prices are based on talking to only three or four contractors. The county would normally provide computer access, workspace, at least for at least two contractors, IDs, signs for vehicles, but what we're pricing is a reappraisal that is totally performed by the contractors. This removes the staff that could be retiring, the retaining of skilled help, or having to hire people to do a reappraisal. At the moment, this appears the most practical plan. There's several different options, from Cadillac to used Ugos. The Cadillac is the highest quality and accuracy. This is $23 to $29 a parcel. It's 1.2 million to 1.6 million approximately. The best reappraisal is a full listing measure. Each property is visited, and appraiser measures all of the structures that are on there and picks up unknown improvements. In this reappraisal, you would expect them to research the market data, visit all the properties that are accessible, take pictures of the main structures which can be shared with other areas of the county like 911. They would knock on main structure doors. They would leave door hangers where appropriate and attempt to make contact with a taxpayer to verify information. In addition to measuring the buildings, they enter the data into the tax department's software, prepare and present the schedule of values, edit and review neighborhoods for new values, assist in handling the appeals for up to 50 days, have on-site project managers for quality control, and we have a guarantee of work and accuracy. The next level, we have historically performed walk-around appraisals. This is basically the same as a listed measure, except you may possibly not make contact with a taxpayer, and you go to the property, you compare the information to a property card, and if you see something different, you measure it, and you add whatever buildings and conditions that you see. It runs about 900,000 to 1.2 million. This does include the pictures and everything else for the full listing measure. Options three and four are not cheap, but they're not ones we would suggest. You're looking at low quality and accuracy. Option three is what's called a drive-by appraisal. Some counties do perform this. You drive by the structures you can see. You make notes on what you see you wish to change. Then you use aerial photography and pictometry and photos that they would take. Our next aerial flight will be 2022. This does not usually have contact with a taxpayer, and the chances of missing quality, condition, and remodels is greater. Another option is still 500, 600,000 to almost $1 million, and it's a desktop review. This is not one we would ever recommend. You basically are looking at the sales, you're looking at the internet, you're looking at GIS, you're making decisions from the desk. If there's properties that are not accessible, there's times you may have to do this on one or two, but it is a lot of money with low accuracy and no guarantee. So in summary, the current market trends, we're all seeing them, but the future is unknown. The possible equalization where the statute requires that in 2023, if we drop below 90% of assessed value to sale price, we would be equalized at a minimum of probably 600,000. If we're still at $900 million public service, 20% is $1.2 million that will be reduced from our revenue, where that value is reduced each year to the next revale. A separate statute says if we go below 85%, we must do a reappraisal within three years. What we're looking for today in the work session is to help determine the budget and the year for the next reappraisal for planning purposes. Reappraisals take at least three years to complete, so the earliest practical reappraisal is 2024, and we'd have to start on that this summer, our contract in place and the initial research with the contractors. What we've been doing is analyzing the 20 and 21 sales prices. We have looked and consulted with the Department of Revenue. We talked to David Baker, the liaison with NCACC, the former Property Tax Division Head of NCDOR. I sent this presentation to them to review. Department of Revenue made a suggestion, which I changed. Mr. Baker liked the presentation and said he supported our conclusions. We've consulted with other counties. We've looked at our independent real estate professionals. A local Realtor sent me market data which corresponded to our sales data. We've talked to the appraisers and, of course, the contractors, especially on the cost of construction. We're preparing a random data sample to send to the Department of Revenue. If the commissioners wish us to pursue the 2024 revale, I will need to send that in. Based on what I see and my conversations with the Department of Revenue, they would probably select the first two options. The chances of them doing options three or four are very slim because of their inaccuracy. The North Carolina general statutes allow the commissioners to advance a reappraisal. We must have one at least eight years. We mandatorily have to have one within three if we're below 85%. It requires a resolution by the commissioners, which the resolution is something we would bring to a future meeting. In conclusion, based on our current observed trends, we would recommend a resolution before June of 2021 to advance the next reappraisal of real property to 2024. We've consulted, I've consulted with county management. We recommend budgeting the funds for the full listing measure. There are benefits for the increased cost, which could be more structures and remodels that are found, and it gives us a good baseline for the future. This would be a contract with a company where we would contract this whole project to In looking to do this, I've consulted with purchasing, and we believe that with the amount of money involved, a full sealed bid RFP, following all the guidelines of the county, is the way to go as we get quotes for this reappraisal. Today, the guidance that we need is if the commissioners are favorable to advance this reappraisal, and if so, we would begin the process of getting the RFPs sent to the appraisal companies, the vendors, and proceed forward with those quotes and bring a resolution back at a future meeting to the commissioners that, once this resolution is passed, we would send it to the Department of Revenue, which would advance this reappraisal. An advancement of a reappraisal is not permanent. The commissioners, as long as you do one every eight years, can push that back out or bring it back at a future date, and that is our request.
Thank you, Mr. McLintock.
So your projections as far as going below the 85% is...
What date in the future? We, right now, based on the downloads we've done of the sales, we would estimate we're probably at 88% right now. In 2022, if we drop below 85%, which is next year, that's when we would, we would have to perform a revale by 2025. We think next year.
And what are the measurables? So you're saying it's based on the market, but how is that data collected?
The North Carolina Department of Revenue each year requests the first deed that's recorded in the county, and starting with that, they send a random set of deed book and page numbers. So from the first deed book and page, we go to the number that's on their sheet, and the next qualified deed, which we can't disqualify, disqualification, foreclosure, family sale, personal property involved. It's a standard qualified sale. We pull the tax value. We take the stamps, market price. During that time, we send a letter to everyone that purchases property anytime, and it gives the person who purchased it the opportunity to let us know if there's information we're unaware of and to confirm the purchase price. We put that on the sheet. This year, there were 360 of those out of about 1,200 qualified sales, so it is a true random sampling. From that, the median value or the median sales ratio was 91.5%. Out of our full 1,200 sales, it's hovering 88 to 89%. So it's a random sampling that the Department of Revenue uses to grade our work, so to speak, and then they send it back out with a PRD, COD, which is just statistical about our outliers, and that median is published and sent to you, the chairman of the board, and to Mr. Metzler.
And so if you could go back, the cost of the reapvaluations is how much?
For a listing measure, it's between 1.2 to 1.6 million for a fully contracted.
And the amount of money, well, once you go below 85%, you start losing some of that utility money, is that right?
Once we go below 85%, we have to perform a revale in three years. It's 90% for the utility, sir.
So once you go below 90, you start losing, okay.
Starting in year 2023. That will not start until the fourth year after the revale. So in 2023 is when we have that potential of that loss. That is the loss for '23 and potentially '24 if we were doing '25 as a revale.
And those, those numbers, the 10%, that's the amount below 90%?
Basically, once we go below 90%... Basically, once we go below 90%, that percentage is what is removed from the value. So if we're at 910 million and our sales ratio drops to 89%, 11% of the value would be removed by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, not just the amount below the 90, the full 11?
It is the full amount, yes, sir. If we're at 80%, wow, you're looking 1.2 million, and that is a pure loss. They take that right off the top.
And the, once you start the process, you said that you could bring it back. I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying there. So once you, if we were to pass a resolution and start the process, we could stop the process at any point in time, is that right?
We can. 2009 showed us it's best to do that prior to sending out the notices, but the one thing about contracting it is we would lose that money. We have to pay the contractors as we go. It's usually incrementally, starting at about 50 to 60% for the first year. So if we stop a reevaluation, we lose the money we paid the contractors, and we lose that research. And if we started it back up in another year or two, we would have to reproduce that.
So you're asking for something to be adopted before the end of June?
Yes, sir. We would have to have a resolution to change the current reappraisal schedule. It's set at 2027, and until the commissioners pass a resolution or by statute, we go below 85%, it remains an eight-year reevaluation. Down the road, you can bring that back to a four or any increment between eight. It's just the passing of a resolution. The commissioners determine that timing.
But once that occurs, once a resolution is adopted, at what point do we actually start spending money?
It'd be this budget year. If we decided to do a 2024 revale, we would have to start this summer. We also, in preparation of knowing when we're going to do the revale, we have a budget reserve where we were doing it over an eight-year period, and that's why we have 183,000 in there now. But to advance the revale, we would have to add more money in there.
But what you would start this summer is that internal data collection or is that expenditure of funds?
Expenditure of funds with the contract company, sir.
That's that RFP you discussed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Through the RFP sealed bid process, we would then pick the vendor and proceed to the contract for them to start working.
I'm done for now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, obviously, when I first looked over your presentation, one of the things, and I think the manager did an excellent job of making sure that my top of my head didn't pop off, because we'd just done one in 2019, so I appreciate that. He kind of prepared us for that. But essentially, what I'm looking at is that we have a reserve fund of about $183,000. If we don't consider a reevaluation, the cost of the reevaluation would, could be significantly more, because we'd have a decline in revenue of approximately anywhere from 1.2 to more, right, in revenue loss by the equalization?
Yes, sir. The equalization loss hurts, not knowing what we will have in revenue in the future. And then there's the potential revenue that we're losing beneath that, the blue parts of the chart. While I'm reflecting the current tax rate, if you have a 20% up reevaluation and our budget's not up 20%, it allows the tax rate reduction to revenue neutral, and you don't lose the equalization.
The equalization fund.
There's a lot of unknowns involved, but this was such a large amount of money, we felt it imperative to bring it to y'all's attention for this planning.
And I guess my next question is for the manager. Should we decide to do this, this resolution would need to be adopted with the budget in June?
Anytime before June 30th, so it could be done at the first meeting in June or during the budget process.
During the budget process, okay. And the resolution itself, even though if we decide to do this and start this process now, that resolution could set forth the next revale eight years from today. I mean, we could include that in the resolution. We could be resolved that we're going to do, start a revale now and then schedule the next one eight years from the conclusion of the one that we start now.
From the resolutions that I've seen from Mr. McClintock, and historically how this has been done, is that we're going to choose, obviously, the next revale, right now, we're set at eight-year. And so you have to pass and vote on an express resolution setting for a four-year period. I have not yet seen one that would...
I'm just saying, so we're talking about two different resolutions versus one? Is that what you're saying?
So we would do, we would vote to do this one, and then we'd have to vote to then move it back to an eight-year after that.
Sir, depending on the economy, yes, sir.
In my last comment, Mr. Chair, before, in your, I don't know that it was embedded in your presentation, but you touched briefly on the revale in 2019, and that we, although we did reduce our tax rate, we did not go to revenue neutral. We realized, I think it was 1.4 million dollar increase in revenue, but those particular items, there were particular capital, or particular needs that we identified that weren't just a random number that we pulled out of the hat. Is that correct, Mr. Manager? I think we had a specific need, both in the, I think within the EMS department, to put another EMS unit on the road, as well as, I think, we also increased our inspections of those guys by opposition. So that's where that number come from. It just wasn't pulled out of a hat. It was revenue neutral. We didn't quite go to revenue neutral, but we had a specific need that we identified, and that's where we funded that.
Yes, Commissioner Richardson.
I appreciate the questions, by the way, colleagues. I think you're straight to the heart of the matter, but if I could summarize a little bit, your expectation is that we were going to be forced to advance this two years anyhow, and by advancing it three years, if we do this resolution, we will improve the accuracy of what we're doing and provide ourselves the option as we either go revenue neutral or make our adjustment, but we will be working on more accurate data. And so in essence, what you're asking is give you an additional year worth of accurate data rather than waiting until the state forces us to. Did I miss that?
No, sir. We, if the current trends maintain, that is our fear.
Oh, no, I understand.
Yes, sir.
So it's going to be two or three years one way or the other?
One question. Is it true then that if 2023, we've seen this trend, it looks like we're going to be hit with this equalization for one year anyway? Is that my understanding?
Yes, sir. We can't do a revale before 2024, a good revale, a practical revale. If we're going to spend that much money, if the current trends maintain, 2023, we would be equalized.
So if we decide to do this during 2024, we would not be hit with equalization for 2024, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So we're automatically going to save at least 607,000, assuming the trend continues?
Yes, sir.
All right, what if the trend doesn't continue? What if this turns into a bubble and it bursts? What happens then?
If we do not get equalized, we normally, with a reevaluation, unless it burst far down, we benefit not only in getting good accurate data, we could see other improvements that we find. But in our unknowns, that is a great question, and that's, this is something where we're having to plan based on current trends. I would love to know what the future holds. 2008 taught me just anything can happen. At the current trend for this year's sales, we've not seen a let-off yet. So next year, 2022's ratio will be based on 2021's sales.
So even if we do this, and it's been said several times, we do have the option of adjusting the tax rate to remain revenue neutral so we don't present a burden for our taxpayers.
Yes, sir. Where I've represented in the chart, the potential lost revenue, it's based on our current tax rate, where if we're at 100%, that is an adjustment you can make to revenue neutral. So it's either tax rate or revenue.
Jim, Mr. Richardson?
Are there not advantages to the taxpayer in having a more accurate assessment?
Yes, sir. Mortgage companies, Realtors do approach us. Something else during a reevaluation, we do miss remodels until a property sells, and that's potential loss of revenue.
But that's an advantage for the government, not the taxpayer?
Yes, sir. The taxpayer does reap an advantage if there's an event like a natural disaster where our values are used or in mortgaging or refinancing.
Well, there's the obvious advantage that their property is valued higher if they're involved in a sale. That could easily impact the sale price.
It could, yes, sir.
Commissioner Travis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, I want to thank you and your staff for putting this all together. I know y'all have been studying it pretty hard. Maybe this is some off-the-wall questions, but I'm just curious. If it's such a dire need to start this evaluation now, why can't we do it quicker?
It takes, the amount of time that it takes to analyze the market or just do the field work, to the amount that we would need to pay a vendor, I don't think it could be done quicker and get a good product.
I mean, if it's such a dire thing, why couldn't we do evaluation in two years? Pay the money and get it done in two years?
I don't know if a vendor would, sir.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out there, you know? The other question I have is, you're seeing, you've been watching a trend since, I guess, last year?
The spring of 2020 is when it really started to jump.
So the years prior to that, there was no trending going on?
Not like this. Our sales ratio in 2018, when we performed the, well, for 2019, our sales ratio was 100.77. In 2018, it was still 98.9, very close to that, and that was based on the 2011 schedule of values. Last year, the 2020 sales ratio, based on what sold in 2019, was 98 and some change. We were looking really good. In the spring of 2020, regardless of the pandemic, the market just took off, and in researching it, local Realtors even sent me data showing on their records where it took off, and it just has not slowed down. Today is so different than January 1 of 2019, the market. But when we do a revale, we pretend it's that 2019 date until the next revale, so everything has changed in a very brief amount of time, and that is a little scary.
Right, and that's my point. Everything is a little scary, and it's starting to trend into a negative favor for the county and its citizens. So why wouldn't you want this resolution as fast as you can get it so you can start these revale process right now so we can maybe offset this 2024?
If we start the process now, I don't think we can have a contract in place before July 1 and budgeting, and I don't think we can get one by 2023. We can broach that to a vendor and an RFP, but the concern is that quality of the revale and the price, how that might affect it, I do not know. Every vendor I spoke with, and I only spoke with a few prior to doing our formal RFP, three years was their considered minimum for a listed measure or walk-around. And option two, option three and four, they're not good, but you can do them really quick, but you don't reap a lot of benefit from that. It's a lot of bad data.
I got you. Thank you, Mark. Yeah, Commissioner Perdell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Travis hit on part of my question, Mark, and I guess that I know that you and your colleagues from around the state are probably, there's probably other counties in the states in a similar boat that we're in as far as seeing the same trends that you presented us, if that makes sense. And I'm just wondering, do you anticipate any difficulty in contracting this service in July if we're not at the forefront of passing a resolution and you getting the RFP out there? I'm just, it's just a question. I mean, are you concerned if we don't move fast enough that there won't be quality contractors available to meet our needs? Because what's concerning me is the public utility equalization, you know? That, to me, there's the loss of revenue there and the potential loss of revenue.
Get the process started quicker.
And so that's my question and that I pose to you.
That is a concern. I think that when we see the published sales ratios this year, Michael Conley, the Assistant Director of Property Tax at NCDOR, said in his 16 years, he's never seen ratios drop like this. And it is being driven by residential property, which is our, the majority of our property, unlike Guilford with huge amounts of commercial. Residential drives our market. So the longer we wait, that could be a concern. I think we can get a good reputable company now, but if other counties start soon, we could see price differences too.
That brings up, Mr. Chairman, why I was kind of mentioning maybe we should do the resolution as fast as we can so they can go ahead and start the process to get some kind of contract in hand, because most counties are going to wait till the next budget.
Let me ask you a question, if I can, Mr. McClintock. It looks like we're going to be hit with 618,000 in 2023 unless we can do a revalue that year, in light of the extreme circumstances that the whole state has experienced. I wonder what you think the chances are of the...
How the markets are going.
The state waiving that loss. If we can, in other words, if we move ahead, we say the earliest we can do this is in 2024, could we possibly get the state to waive that 618 equalization reduction?
That would have to be a legislative action. Since this is in the general statutes, it would have to be by legislature, sir.
Okay, that's a good point. Yeah, because I mean, that's half of what the revale is going to cost, right?
Yes, sir.
So if we could do that...
That's the minimum if we're equalized.
Right. Any more questions, gentlemen?
But the, there's four ways to do the reevaluation that you presented tonight, and any of those four ways satisfies the state requirement, is that right?
Yes, sir. Once we develop a plan and a budget and send it to the state with a random sample, they can suggest one over the other, but the commissioners decide which method we would use.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any further questions?
Which one did we use last time? If you could just share with us, what would be, in 2019, the closest option that you listed, where would that process fall under?
A mixture of option two and a hybrid. In 2019, we used existing staff to write the schedule of values, do all the land pricing and do all the basic research. We used a contractor to do over 22,000 to 25,000 improved parcels in the field, and then we do something that's kind of a rolling revale. As we send our appraisers out to a few thousand properties each year, they look at what needs to change for the next revale, especially in the rural areas, and we're constantly doing that in preparation for the next one. So it's kind of a rolling review, some desktop on rural vacant land, then the appraisers did a walk-around that we contracted, and that's historically what we did as we worked for the... for the 03s and 11s. We take that card, we look at it, and if it says 30, but you can, it looks like it's 50 feet, you remeasure it. If it looks about right, you don't. And that does speed things up, but it can cause you to miss things. So it was a hybrid approach. The whole state really doesn't do that, but we were in a position where, with the experience that we had, me and Diane seen several revows, we were able to, well, for instance, our senior appraiser is an architect, so he was great working the cost manual for the schedule of values. We're fortunate to have that level of experience on our staff. We did the schedule of values and a lot of the background work, but we fear in the future, we're not going to have that staff as experienced people retire out.
Any further questions? Well, we don't need action tonight, but we will need action soon on this. So we'll be looking to hear from you pretty quickly, Mr. Manager.
Just to reiterate, the big concern and the reason we brought it so quickly to you guys is because, again, by 2023, we will already lose 618,000 that year. So that's, unless we can get some legislative action taken care of. And the fact is, it's very pressing. We've got to do the resolution first, then you have to develop the RFP, come back to the commissioners for approval, who we recommend for the RFP, and then we have to do a budget amendment after that. So all that has to take place between now and June 30.
And in speaking with Amanda, I think I can start the RFP process to get the quotes for the project even before the formal resolution, if that is what we want to pursue. If y'all say that we want to look at this 2024 reevaluation, I can start rolling on this RFP and get firm numbers that could help make the decision.
Commissioner Perdell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and thank you, Lance. That was going to be one of my questions as far as, from a budget standpoint. But do you need, although, Mr. Chairman, we don't need any action tonight, if we want him to proceed, we're looking at getting some numbers for us, would it not be in our best interest to select or give him guidance on which option to proceed within the RFP versus trying to get him to go out there and get bids on, multiple bids on multiple options?
I think anything we can do to provide clear direction would be beneficial.
And I'll just start by saying that out of the four options that presented, and your recommendation, I believe, was one or two.
Option one, sir, the full list and measure.
I would, I kind of like option two, but that's, that's.
I like what we did last time.
But you said you don't feel like you have the staff currently to do what we did in 2019?
It was very labor intensive, the hybrid approach. And the, with staff, Todd has been here since '07, but by the time we get into this revow, the most experienced people will be gone. We really would have to hire to do the hybrid approach again. And a contracted approach is better, not knowing what our cycle of the next revow is going to be and the training learning curve. So.
Let me ask you a question. If we, if we tell you to look at either option one or two, or maybe option one and two, would that be, give you enough focus?
Yes, sir. The reappraisal companies could quote us both options with that one RFP.
What, can you show me the price again for three and four?
Option three was 800,000 to a million, and that's your drive-by. Some companies specialize in only doing drive-by appraisals. It's a little better when you have more city. Option four is the 600 to 900,000, and that is your least accurate. For the amount of money, the return we would get, the other options, one and two, we should find structure and remodel that should easily pay for them over option four.
And the difference between option one and two is the knocking on the door, contacting the homeowner?
Contact to the taxpayer is the biggest option. And also, instead of the full measure, we just look at the card, and if it looks like we need to measure, we measure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like option two.
And of course, the other saving grace is the federal government may have an impact on the economy.
I wished I knew what the economy was going to do. Yes, sir. It's terrifying to think about.
Right.
We have our own equalization and the tax rate that we get to set as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we want to provide direction, gentlemen? Commissioner Travis?
I agree with Commissioner Perdell. I kind of like option two.
Somebody want to make that an emotion? Do we need it as a motion or just as directive? Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I'm suggesting that we probably need to look at one and two, and if time permits, that would be the motion.
I'm going.
We have to make the motion, but we seek advice from staff as they consider options one and two. You know, there's quite a wide range in costs presented here, and until they get the RFP back, we're not going to be wanting to make that final decision, I don't think.
I'm fine with that.
Do we need this in form of a motion?
That'd be preferable.
That would be best.
At this point, so what I'm understanding is just asking Mark to come back with more formal numbers?
And submit RFP or prepare RFPs?
RFPs are doing.
What's going to help you, Mark?
That would help. If I can go on and get the RFP ball rolling, we can get firm numbers in, then once we have those numbers and we have a vendor that we want to select, all it will take is a resolution.
Okay. I don't know the timeframe. Can you suggest, is, are we talking about first, first or second meeting in May?
I would think so. I'll have to get with Amanda. She does the RFPs. We don't do many, and we're going to go right through her office for that.
Yeah, I would think you're right.
I'm not proposing to put a timeframe on it. I was just trying to get an idea of what, how long it was going to take.
Second meeting in May.
Yeah, I think, if that's your motion.
I make a motion for, to direct staff to develop RFPs for option one and two, and present them back to the commissioners for their approval or picking of which one by the second meeting in May. Is that good enough?
So how many companies do this sort of stuff?
There's, there's probably about 15 or 20 that the Department of Revenue has authorized for use, that they've vetted. I think for us to develop the RFP, if we leave it out there a couple weeks, it's probably going to take at least four to five weeks to get that back, probably.
My concern, though, is, I mean, we're getting this information, the initial thought process was just deliver the information, and now we're rushing into, off of speculation, and to directing staff to move forward with part of this process. I'm just not so sure how smart that is. Not saying it's wrong, I'm just not so sure.
I don't know if we're rushing. That's a subjective assessment, but we need to get on with it in any event, because we need to get, we need to get it done by 30 June. And if we don't get it by the second meeting in May, we got one or two in June, so. You second your motion?
All right. We have a motion and a second. All right, discussion. Commissioner Perdell?
I got one question, I guess. What do we expect, Mark? What do you expect to happen between now and June 30th to change your recommendation to this board that we move forward with the revow? What new information is going to come in that's going to, going to change our, or is going to give us additional information that would impact our decision?
I don't know. If we saw something like the banks that failed, you know, I think it was September of 2008, where it was just a big waving flag, we're not seeing that type lending anymore. This isn't something, we normally see something instantaneous. So over the next month or two, I'd be surprised if we saw a change in the trend, but since 2008, I don't know. That was one reason, there's so many unknowns involved in this. It's always a concern.
And I say that because although I'm not as, I'm not as involved in real estate as probably as Commissioner Berger, but I just know from talking to realtors, you get a, and I know ours is based on residential sales. Residential sales, if you put your house on the market, if you want to sell your house, now's the time to put it on the market. And within a very brief time, you will have a contract. And my, and so if we anticipate that trend to change in the next 60 days, that would be amazing to me. So that's what, all I'm saying is, just for my thoughts, is if something changes between now and our next meeting, that would, if you anticipate any new information that would impact our decision between now and the next meeting.
Commissioner Berger?
I think most of, when you, when you keep up with that, I guess, that data and with folks that speculate in that market, the foreclosure moratorium is currently scheduled to be lifted, which would then flood the market with, with, I guess, product. Once the market is flooded with product, then that whole thing changes. Lot of them are predicting that would be this fall. And some are saying next spring, but of course, it is looking into the crystal ball, trying to figure that out. But right now, the foreclosures are, have been stopped. So product is at a minimum, but product, no, within 60 days, that would not change. I believe currently, is the foreclosure supposed to start back up? Is June or July, I think? Somewhere in there.
I think so.
And then after that, you're looking at about a two and a half month period before you'd start seeing those hit the market.
And I guess, Commissioner Berger, what I'm saying, my point is, is that Mark has presented us the best information we have available today. And what we're talking about from a residential standpoint and the moratorium on foreclosures, that is speculative. You know, that, it may happen, and to the degree it happens, nobody's really sure.
It's out there now.
Yeah.
And it's scheduled to end this summer.
But how it impacts the market is, what we do know is that our current trending, equalization, could hit us up for as much, as little as a penny on our abdolorum tax. Is that pretty accurate?
Close.
Pretty close?
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Manager. If we allow this RFP to go out, it'll come before us supposedly at the second meeting in May, we have the option at that time to reject all bids?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could certainly do that, absolutely.
So we still have the option to postpone it at that point?
Yes, sir.
Because there are some other things that need to be checked.
I don't disagree with that at all.
I agree, I agree with you. Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson?
Is the bottom line that we're acting this evening on the best information our staff and their references can provide?
Absolutely.
Call a question?
All right, gentlemen. Question's been called. We have a motion and a second. Does everybody understand the motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mark. We appreciate your department and your efforts on this. I know it's a very complex situation that we find ourselves in. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Manager. We appreciate that.
We got adjourned.
Excuse me, say that again?
You got adjourned. Motion adjourned?
Please.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.